Welcome, everybody. This is one of my highlights every year. Last year, I think the -- I can speak for the board members. We enjoyed it and watching through the year how some of the ideas that were fostered from last year's workshop played out. And it's very -- it's at least rewarding for me to watch that. So, thank you for all attending and good morning, Ms. Bello. Sir?
Thanks very much. Andrew's going to join me here. I would want to start in exactly the same place that the chairman just mentioned. We use this as a stake in the ground for the year. We've got a big agenda and we're executing it month by month, day by day, and we share with you every month. But, we really think the calibration with you at the -- at this annual meeting is the way that we communicate with you, from you, and then into the organization itself and you see it unfold. So, we use the good offices of the collaborative lab to make sure everyone has it. We're trying to do two or three things here today, though. We want to let board members speak, and we will speak less. We do this every month. But, I bring that up first because that is where my comfort level is the weakest. Okay? I would much prefer to make presentations all morning and have you guys ask questions. Okay? But, that's not the way we want to do it. We will have a series of collaborations. We'll rotate you through so that there's two, two, and one at each of the sessions, but it'll -- your partner in those sessions will change. We have enough staff so that if questions come up and you have questions about the topics, that will work. We're not going to make presentations on each of the topics. There's virtually nothing on the agenda that you haven't seen or heard over the course of the year. When you get into small groups, you will pick the topics you want to focus on from strategic purposes. What would we like more of? What do we think works? What do we think needs some attention? Ask questions of the team and work so that each of the groups can make their own small decisions, and then we'll bring them all back together and we'll have a collaborative decision about where we put our strategic energies for the next year. So, we'll do that and we'll be done in the morning. Everyone is in great shape. You know, it sounds like a little bit of structure. It's free form. The board needs to tell us if there's something that you don't see, you don't hear, something that you've been thinking about. Now's the time to bring that up, and we really want to keep that as an open possibility. We've tried to be as open as we can about the work we're doing and where we go, and then you give us your best guidance, and I think that's the way the system's supposed to work. Andrea?
Good morning. It is going to be a great morning of rich collaboration. You feel it? Okay. It's in the air. All right. There are two key agenda items we're going to cover today. The first is, we want to celebrate. We want to celebrate our 2014 successes. And you can see we have a whole gallery of successes, and we are going to highlight each of these boards, and we will invite our board members also. As you have successes, please share those. Some of the proudest times that you have when you're out in the community, some of the things you brag about, we would invite you to share those as well. And the second agenda, which will be the lion's share of our time together, will be to get your best direction on 2015 and where we're going to go and some next steps we should consider as a staff. So, that is our agenda. I'd like to begin the gallery walk of successes, and we'd ask for volunteers for each of our nine walls, and we're going to take only two minutes for each wall. And let's start with college experience, student success. I'll ask Dr. Vidito.
Well, thank you. Well, the college experience, which is really a flagship initiative for the college, has had a fabulous year. For starters, we received the Florida College Systems Chancellor's Best Practices for Innovation and Education Award, and as our presentations kind of percolated through higher education, it's pretty clear that this is going to end up being a national model. We presented at the League for Innovation, at the Achieving the Dream. But, more importantly, here at home, we've seen our students' success rates increase in really a stellar fashion. The students who've completed a learning plan, for example, first-time in college students, their success rates are 20% higher than those who did not. When we consider students who have visited the Learning Support Commons, it's interesting, but if you visit one time, it increases your chances of success about 1%, five times about 5%, 10 times about 10%. It's really amazing. And in addition to those things, not only has the college experience been experiencing phenomenal success, but we have other initiatives, like our Title III grant. It's pretty amazing to receive a Title III grant, but our outside evaluators have indicated that we have made strong progress towards achieving our goals. We've been recognized nationally as one of the most veterans-friendly schools in the country. So, all in all, we could talk way longer than two minutes, but our student success this year has really been stellar.
All right. Let's hear it for student success. Outstanding. Thank you. How about workforce expansion? Dr. Conley?
Thank you. We've made great strides this year in working with the academic side of St. Petersburg College and what we've done. One of the things that were really strong is burning glass software. We found out that there's 30,000 individuals that go to manufacturing jobs in Pinellas County. By using this software, I found there were 4,654 open jobs last year. So, by increasing our training, we'll be able to help those students find employment. Another highlight is Learn to Earn. You're all familiar with that. We've had 12,346 students, and our enrollment is up 25% this year. Through y'all's leadership and recommendations, we've been able to increase programming to help that number to increase. And the crown jewel is probably the exploratory labs. You have a packet that I just printed yesterday for you.
This one we're really kind of announcing today. Jim's been working on this. This is probably the only thing you haven't heard from us.
The exploratory labs are in conjunction with Tech Data and Valpak and the Tampa Bay Technology Forum. What we've done is put together curriculum in a five-day experience for the students that'll be hands-on. It'll be taught in a flipped classroom style, so the first 30 hours will be preparation that the students have to do before they get to the class. Once they get there, they'll be doing business planning, they'll be doing all the different business aspects that go on within a company, but they'll also be learning technology. The students could come from any major. I mean, they're as interested in psychology majors and education majors as they are IT majors, and the reason is the social media aspects and the skills that they're doing during the camp. On page 10 shows the registration process, and it's a full-fledged -- they have to get a letter of recommendation, they have to have a cover letter, they have to have the registration. But, the unique part is then they show up at Tech Data and three HR people actually interview them, put them through the rigor of what it takes to gain employment at a big company. This will increase the students' wages upon graduation, and Tech Data asks for first dibs on hiring the students as they're in the class. I negotiated with St. Pete, University of Tampa, that we would have half the students from St. Pete College. They'll come from either our 24 program, or they'll come from the academic side of what's going on at the institution.
Great.
Thank you.
Let's hear it for workforce expansion. Good stuff. Thank you.
Good morning. We're very proud of the fact that our learning centers and our libraries have become the hubs of our campuses. As you can see from the data, we're continuing to see this fall an increase in the number of faculty that are giving time to students in our learning centers. The number of student visits is up to 126,000, which is a 14% increase from last fall. We've had unduplicated 17,800 students. That's more than half of our students have visited our learning centers and libraries at least one time this semester. There's been an increase in the number of workshops and instructions, and as Stan Vidito commented, our students are beginning to understand that going to the learning centers is the best way to help them achieve success because it's an extension of what they start in their classroom so that when they come back to the class, that they are more likely to be successful. We also have an online service available to students for tutoring that's available 24/7, and we've seen an increase in the number of students using that particular service. And so, again, we are just very proud of the success and the change in the culture, that it's for all students. It's not just for those in a crisis, but it's for all students to benefit from.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. And also, I think, Dr. Mercandante, you had a success you'd like to share.
Yeah, I'll just add to the out-of-class support. It's amazing, I think, when students come to a college when they have an actual experience other than just stopping in and taking courses. Many of us have probably experienced this ourselves, and because of the faculty engaging with students in the learning support, you have students that are doing more than just taking the course. They're coming here, they're getting experience, they're getting interaction, they're developing mentors with faculty. I think one of the important things to note here is all of this is on top of what faculty do in their offices on a daily basis. So, take what they're doing on a daily basis. This is extreme added value because they're doing it in learning support. So, we're making huge strides in that to benefit student success. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it for out-of-class support. Thank you, Dr. Mercandante. All right. Online revitalization. Susan, thank you.
Good morning. With online revitalization, we've been focusing on the transfer to MyCourses from the Angels platform. We set up the system to make it 100% accessible for all students, which enables all students to have a different learning style. We did focus groups with students and took feedback from faculty and have improved the interface for the spring. One of the challenges was getting everyone ready for faculty training. We needed to change the training from the pilot so that we could move from 300 faculty to over 1,000 in three months. We now have 1,312 faculty ready for spring. We're short about 75. We're going to get them through in the next week. We also wanted to make sure that students were ready. So, we ran a pilot during this fall session, looked at student training, did an orientation, received feedback from over 1,900 students on that training, made a number of adjustments, and we now have an improved asynchronous online training that gives students immediate feedback. So, if they go to submit something to the Dropbox or send a message to their faculty member, they immediately know whether or not they're doing it correctly. So, that has now been built into the course based on their feedback. We're also going to support that online training with 62 one-hour sessions in conjunction with the Learning Commons. And we had to migrate the courses from Angel to MyCourses. So, we've transferred 2,251 courses. We're getting in a lot of last-minute ones that faculty forgot about, so we've got about 75 to finish off this week, but we want to make sure they're completely ready by the end of this week so that faculty can get in and prep everything for the spring.
Outstanding.
We will have an online launch on time for spring.
Great. Thank you, Susan. Let's hear it for online revitalization. Employee professional development. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, at St. Petersburg College, we're not just committed to student success, we're committed to employee success. So, I want to highlight a few things that are familiar to you and give you updates and some new things as well. You recall a couple of months ago that Brian Miles and I shared with you the Delta Academy and Plans for Leadership, SPC. They are well underway. The 24 in each cohort have been selected, and we're going to kick it off January 22nd with a joint reception and dinner for all of the -- all of those selected. Career Service Evaluation Revitalization process, Leslie Moore reported that on that to you last month. We are continuing to work on that. There's a lot of development that is still going on. We're working with John Street Matters Organization to help us create the tool, but more importantly, to transform the process. And related to that transformation is something that we piloted in the new fiscal year, and that's creating position-specific training guides. You all approved about 34 brand-new positions for the fiscal year, and many of those were in student services, and many of those were for people being hired in positions at peak times. So, we needed to do work with the supervisors of those employees to make sure they were as equipped as possible to hit the ground running. So, we started creating these. We still have more than 62 create to finish the complement of our career service positions, but this is also going to tie directly into what we're doing with the career service evaluation. Because if you recall, Leslie shared that this is going to become more of a growth plan, a guide to employee growth. So, these will also help with that, with career latticing. And I believe next we're going to talk about some CEDAL opportunities. Eric Carver?
So, this year, we've had the opportunity to work with our Faculty 180, which is our new digital portfolio system for faculty. And this system, it captures the faculty evaluation, but also it affords faculty the opportunity to build a professional development plan, engage that conversation with their dean, and capture all their certificates and some of the professional development activities throughout the year, along with several committees. So, it's well-developed, and we worked through a committee to get that, and all faculty members, all 400, have access to it now. We also, through CEDAL grants, we had 80 applicants, and we have 24 recipients that they're going to engage professional development activities and best practices in teaching and learning throughout the year to add to their professional portfolio. Our CEDAL cohort, but one of the big ones this year, was over 500 completers for our Dev Ed Success Strategies course that we developed in response to SB 1720. But, this also evolved from a conversation with working with first-time college students and Dev Ed students to best practices in teaching and learning and delivering content. Two adjunct learning events this year. We have another one in January. The first one was on a Saturday. We had 168 adjuncts that showed up for this event, which doubled the amount last year. So, it shows the adjuncts are a little more engaged, and they want to see what's moving, especially in partner with our online revitalization. So, we have much work to do, and we'll be working before the semester starts in January.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Let's hear it for employee professional development. Student loan default success. Michael?
Good morning, everyone. Since June, our business partner, Senate I-3 Group, has helped 2,700 SPC borrowers get out of delinquency, and our FY cohort default rate that was projected to go over 32% is now projected to be at 16%. We are absolutely delighted with the work this company has been doing. Their loan counselors are available day, evenings, and on Saturday, and also provide online chat. We have two new cyber advisors who are calling all our new borrowers to review their loan and future borrowing. We also have identified a staff member for each campus to be an expert and promote default prevention. And lastly, we recently had a college-wide collaborative lab with 40 participants and other colleges on default prevention to help us with future strategies.
Great. Thank you. Let's hear it for student loan default success. Thank you, Michael. All right. Let's come on over to the refocused marketing and information campaign. Let's ask Diana to speak to that.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. We've done a lot of things this year, and you'll find packets in front of you, both a year-end review as well as the complete spring enrollment campaign. We refocused our marketing to make sure that we're better targeted in our audience on channels that they listen to. We've also have done a lot of work with making sure that students pay and register earlier in the process, which has been very effective. We sent out daily fee bills to them, and we've also created, integrated a campaign across digital platforms for that as well. As a result, this last purge indicated that we retained students and that we're up at least 3% as compared to this time last year. So, very good success rates there. We've launched into digital campaigns, of course, and some stats from that are that we paid 3 cents per impression. We'd had over 7 million impressions. We were shown on over 10,000 different sites, and we're on the top three of search results, 1.2 average, to be exact. We also launched a new homepage, and we saw 67% more inquiries from that initiative, which had -- the homepage had stronger enrollment messages and a program finder quick link. Thank you.
Outstanding. Let's hear it for marketing and information campaign. Thank you.
We threw in last Friday's package, but I wanted to bring it out again today. The numbers are starting to kick in. It's starting to look like a plan, starting to look effective, but it's not an inconsequential body of work over the past year. We appreciate your guidance, patient guidance. So, thanks. We're very proud of that work.
Okay. All of our success initiatives require a strong foundation, and we've gone to great lengths over the last few years to enhance our infrastructure to make sure we've got the support in place. Just a few highlights this year. We've completed our fourth year of technology refresh, and going into next year's budget, we have over $4 million of recurring budget going into technology refresh every year, which amounts to about $16 million of equipment, technology that's being replaced regularly now. We also, this year, completed our, what's called our Microsoft Link rollout, which is an integrated communications platform that not only replaced our phone system, which was kind of on its last legs, but allows us to video conference, to share information without leaving our offices, and we think that's gone to help our internal communication significantly. We -- very important, particularly to students, who everybody's got their own device these days. We completely revamped, revitalized our wireless infrastructure, which about doubled our coverage college-wide. There are very few places that you can't go now to not get coverage, so even outside areas. So, a big improvement there. We did integrate live chat into Diana's intake process on the application where students can now submit chats and talk. Very significant goes to what Dr. Vidito was talking about, too. We are -- have been recognized by the Aspen Institute for what we're doing today, our budget planning process, and we're actually doing an interview next week that will be featured in the Aspen Institute's training program next year. One more, I think, significant highlight is that our accreditation requirements require that we credential all of our instructional staff, particularly adjuncts. Up to -- prior to this year, that was all a manual process, and this year, we, and particularly with a lot of hard work on the dean's parts, launched our online faculty credentialing system, which has now fully automated that process and made it much better. Many other things, but I think those are the highlights. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Duncan. Let's hear it for operational and process improvement. All right. We've almost reached the end. What a success story, huh? Dr. Law, can you speak to some of the partnership successes?
Ken, thanks very much. In your packet, we went through -- the originalists had 600 entries. We've got down to our best 200 entries. When we just surveyed, who are we partnering with in some way? Who do we have some relationship with? The response came back with more than 600 community names of things, and most of them you would know. But, we're very, very proud of some of the key ones that are taking our attention, and again, if you have something, please let us know. But, if you've not -- when we next go downtown, we want to go to what's called the Tech Garage. It's an entrepreneurial center in downtown St. Petersburg. It is an offshoot from the Star Center over in Largo, but it's up, it's running, it's nurturing startup and small business right in our facility. It is right off the main drag for us there. You know the Project for Accountable Justice out at Seminole, working with our friends in Tallahassee. Our articulation with the area colleges continues to pay dividends to us Complete College America and some of the other kinds of things where we're trying to make sure that we send a consistent signal throughout. The two that I want to highlight, the work that Jim Conley's been doing with the Tampa Bay Technology Forum, that tech lab that we did today came from them a year ago as a proposal, working with Tech Data and some others for that to happen. So, the whole infrastructure of Tampa Bay Technology Forum has been part of that with us. Joint use with the libraries, that continues to grow. We have a number of -- in fact, I think we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, but we've been out to visit the folks at Goodwill Industries, at some of the other community organizations that deal with large numbers of people who are trying to put their lives back on track. And we're finding that we now with Learn to Earn and some of the other kinds of certificate focus that we have, we're getting a really nice response from those folks as partnerships. You're very familiar with a number of others. We've got to continue -- this is an area that's now on my radar screen. It's almost too much. We need to be really careful. You asked me when I got here to refocus us on our mission. I think if we go around, I can say, ladies and gentlemen, we are focused on our mission. This part of the mission is starting to branch out in ways that we have to be a little more mindful of. Can we afford -- what's the nature of the partnerships? What's the nature of the relationships? Do they take away from our core services and those sorts of things? We'll keep it on the radar screen. It's something to be proud of, but, you know, too much of a good thing is still too much. So, we're working on that. You have the list. I highlighted the ones that you would be familiar with. If you know of things, or if you know that there are areas where we're not making the right relationships, just say the word, and we'll get those. That would be your job today if you think there are some relationships that need community help.
Thank you, Dr. Law. And we also have Frances, who will highlight some other partnership successes. Thank you, Frances.
Good morning. The foundation saw a nice increase in partnerships over the past year in all categories, individual, corporate, civic, and community groups. These partnerships are underwriting scholarships for nursing, IT, business, education. They support study abroad, men achieving excellence, women on the way, as well as our Leopar Ratner Museum and our Palladium Theater. In terms of our corporate partnerships, we've seen a 17% increase there, and, you know, the college is a powerhouse in workforce development, and our business community is the biggest beneficiary of the work here. Our alliances with our business community are strategic. They allow our business community to support the work of the college, but also help to ensure that our students possess the skills and the competencies that they're looking for as they build their workforces. We think these partnerships will become increasingly important as it doesn't look like there'll be a sharp increase in tuition or funding from Tallahassee. The foundation has increased assets from $46 million four years ago to over $60 million today. We've seen a 30% increase in the number of donors we have. We've seen a 91% increase in the number of contributions over four years. So, we're looking forward to doing more of the same, and thank you.
Great. Let's hear it for community partnerships. Thank you, Frances. And we have a bonus success in the college experience area. Leslie?
Hello, I'm Leslie Moore. I just have a really quick comment. What I have to say is not necessarily stated on this board, yet it's stated in every aspect of this board, because as an advisor, I meet with students and their families every single day. So, I just wanted to say I'm very proud of the student services staff, and especially the advisors as myself, and being such a critical role in the college experience and being a part of St. Petersburg College.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. All right. Well, are you proud, board members? That's good stuff. May I ask each of you to share, as you go out in the community, to share something that you highlight that you're most proud of with our institution? Would you feel comfortable just kind of passing the mic and sharing that? Chairman?
It's been said, but my highlights this year, dealing with students, is what our libraries have become, and the amount of visits that you can see over there is actually staggering and probably on the forefront of what college student services are looking at around the nation.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbons?
There's so many things that I'm proud of related to St. Petersburg College. Of course, the Midtown and its success and how we're moving that effort along, but also everywhere I go, there's always somebody that has some type of unique partnership with the college and this community, and it always impresses me. I don't know of all of them, but it always impresses me that we have these partnerships and how well they're going. And I'm especially a proud because we respond -- we seem to respond to this community's needs very well. It doesn't take St. Petersburg College very long to get a program or an idea and take it to a program level that would -- that actually responds to the needs of the community and the citizens of this county. So, I'm especially proud of the staff and how we respond to those needs.
Collegiate high school.
I think I would have to echo, you know, what Mr. Gibbons said is, in my discussions with the community and kind of my relationships is, it doesn't take long for a discussion to get turned into reality. When the community needs something, and a lot of it related to probably the workforce expansion and some of those successes, is how quickly we can respond and turn that into a program or a certificate that really puts people to work. And most of my discussions are about putting And most of my discussions are about putting people to work and getting them qualified. I mean, a two-year degree, four-year degree, you know, not everybody's cut out for that. And I think as an institution, we recognize that and put the right programs in place to get people, you know, doing the things that they want to do. And I'm very proud of that, and I think we're very successful at doing that.
It's not fair to have to go last. You guys all said everything I wanted to say. I think the only thing I would add is exactly what you just said on the business community focus. I love hearing that we're solving workforce issues and that the business community feels like we are the responsive organization in all of Tampa Bay, and everyone has very positive things to say about our reaction to the need. And so it's putting the students to work, but it's also solving the workforce issues of the business community.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bella. Let us give our board members a round of applause. We couldn't do any of this without your leadership and your support and direction, so. All right, we are now segueing from celebration mode to expectation mode. And we have, as you can see, three key areas that we're going to focus on for the remainder of the morning. The first are student initiatives. We will have two rounds dedicated to student initiatives, because we have so many strategic focus areas in that category. Then we will have a third round in organizational health initiatives, and then finally, we will end it with community partnerships. The way we have segmented these four rounds is each one will be 35 minutes in length, and they will have three parts. Part one will be a riveting, high-level presentation called Just the Facts. And since you have already heard outstanding presentations throughout the year on each of these topics, we will just be giving you a high level. And at that point, as you listen to each of the five-minute presentations, you can identify which one, two, or three topics you really want to hone in on in the collaborative discussion part. So a five-minute presentation, then we will deploy into teams for 20 minutes, and you can identify those two or three topics you want to address. We will ask you to really dive deep into what areas maybe do you need clarity, or would you like to weigh in on, and end with some of your key direction on next steps for the future. That's really the outcome of each of these rounds, is what are your next steps that you would advise us to kind of explore for the future, for 2015? And then we will finally come back after each round, and we will ask our board members to serve as spokespeople for your teams. You'll be divided into three different teams, and if we can ask you to share what are the next steps you would recommend, and then to kind of collaborate together and weigh in together on those next steps, maybe reach consensus, affirm, or have a different kind of a viewpoint on that. So that's kind of the three-part. And the first section is on student initiatives. And if you'd like, probably the best piece that you could have in hand as we're going through these presentations is the Just the Facts handout. It has, Dr. Law's holding it up, it has yellow highlight there. And I will ask Dr. Williams to get us started, if you would, our five-minute Just the Facts.
Okay. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, but we're online.
We're online. Man. All right, good morning. It is certainly a pleasure to stand before you and share with you some highlights from the student services area that outlines sort of what's been going on and what our thoughts are for what's going, what needs to happen going forward. So the first slide you'll see would be the learning plan from the college experience. We've talked a lot about the college experience, you've heard a lot about the college experience, but there's three critical areas that we're going to focus on going forward. One is the learning plan. We know the learning plan works, we know that students who receive a learning plan have a higher success rate. However, we want to make sure that the learning plan is easy to use, is something that the students will use every single term. Right now, we're wondering if students are only using it for one term to get it started and not going back, and this needs to be a tool that they use to register with, but also use for planning. And so we have some work that needs to go on there going forward. Early alert. You know, we always think we need to get more early alerts, but the job is to get fewer early alerts, so that students are succeeding in class, the faculty are doing well with course management and helping students get through it. This year so far, we've received 3,800 alerts, which is a little bit higher than last fall. So we want to really dig in there and look at what's going on with those alerts. Is the system working the way that we would like for it to work? And we want to make sure that the system gets student view, so the student can see what's going on in the coaching system going forward. The last piece of the college experience is the new student orientation. We know that the legislative team gave us a wonderful rule for dev ed. And unfortunately, dev ed is what we use to really get students into new student orientation. With those changes, fewer students ended up taking the new student orientation. And so the team is looking at ways to provide the information to students for the new student orientation session in various ways. And so we're going to go back and take a look at new student orientation, look at maybe some, you know, four-week courses or something to help get the students the information. We also want to strengthen the new student orientation going forward. So that's the college experience.
All right.
There's a lot more that happens outside of the college experience. College experience has made huge strides in student success, but there are other components that enhances how students do. One is advising. We've made a lot of changes in our advising model. Our advisors are super-trained, very engaging with students, but we realize that there's a need to further develop the advising model, so that we can, one, help students succeed, further integrate the information that students receive in the services for advising. We still have a little bit of siloing there that needs to be fixed and provide students with a more fluid experience. And so we're going to make some changes to our advising model that's going to integrate career services further and help students finish what they start. The other is intervention strategies. You don't get to hear a lot about the students who don't succeed, or the students who are on some sort of performance plan, whether they're on academic warning or something else. Well, we have a group of those students who significantly need assistance, but not when they get back, it's before they come back, that we have a plan in place for them when they come back from a probation or suspension status, that we are working closely with them and say, hey, you need to go to tutoring, or you must do your learning plan, so that they don't make the same mistakes that they made when they first started, which has been happening. The other is the career center redesign. Last year, you gave us advice on improving the career centers. And we started with changing the design of the career centers, but we realized as we start changing the design, we also need to further integrate our career services that will include end-to-end, which means you get started, we know the career you want, you get your internship, we help you with your resume, and you get job placement. And so there's some work that we still need to do in that area to get the career centers redesigned college-wide. We'll be starting to work on downtown campus in reference to that in the future, but we'll still have some work that needs to be done there. Disability resources. SPC has received a lot of accolades for more veterans, but we also are receiving more students who could benefit from disability resources and the services provided there. Unfortunately, we have not done a great job advertising that we offer those services, and many times, we end up working with students in crisis mode. And that's not the way we need to work. We need to streamline the disability services processes. We need to provide a training plan to the team to make sure that everyone's on the same page, so that students will receive the same service campus to campus. And we need to educate our community, our advisors, our faculty, and everyone else on disability services, and how to support students. That's student services.
Very good. Thanks, Dr. Williams. All right, so we are now ready to deploy into our first round of teams. We have Team One in this area, Team Two directly in the back, and Team Three over in this area. And you have your first team assignment in your packets. All teams are A-teams. And when you get to your team, you'll have 20 minutes to pick two or three topics that you really want to hone in on and provide some direction on next steps. So we will play some traveling music for you, and we will meet you in your team areas. All right, a very productive 20 minutes. We can discontinue the music, and we will have our team reports. All right. So let's hear our first round of reports on next steps. Looks like the college experience was a very popular strategic focus area, so I'll ask Team One if you can share your next steps that you contributed in the college experience area. Ms. Westine?
I'm going to go through. One was that we, number three up there, which was making the new student orientation mandatory. It works, we know it works. You have people go through it to see. Make it mandatory. The other was we made it possible for early alerts. I like to do statistics, I know that shocks everyone in the room, on what of the students that get an early alert, what percentage withdraw or drop that class, or what grade do they end up with afterwards. And then just, that's what I had heard. You go up to number nine, yeah? Structuring SLS courses or study skills. It appears, essentially making, I call them study skill courses, you guys call them SLS, but basically making them mandatory. If you're coming into school with a 2.1 from high school, you got to go through a mandatory study skill course. If you're on probation and you want to get back into our school, rock on with your bad self, but you're going to be taking this course too. And let me see, I don't know what else we have. Let's see, okay, keep going down.
Well, let's, may we stay on first the college experience, and we'll get others to weigh in? Thank you, Ms. Westine, that's great. Team Two.
First, Team Two.
Team Two. Looks like you had a couple of next steps.
Oh, yeah. So I told myself I wasn't going to talk, but Bridget made me. So.
It's like that.
Yeah. We talked about making the learning plan a more complete, one-stop kind of shop. So, for example, if you get work study in your financial aid, you can put in work study, it'll tell you all the work study jobs and who you talk to on the campus, along with all the stuff that you need for your academic courses and all that stuff. Kind of a comprehensive concept that would allow the student to utilize one place, as opposed to trying to jump around in the hodgepots. Because, you know, like this technology thing, people don't like moving around, they just want to get to one thing that can be their tool to be able to be successful at the college. And then, yeah, that's the same thing. And then there was another one we had. Yeah, that was it. But the next thing that we talked about was having, moving to the next step, Lauralee talked about having people taking SLS courses. We thought about having something, a summer program or a program at some parts of the year that identifies students before they got here, and they could go through a summer, I'll just say for the summer, because it makes it easier for people to understand. During the summer, we identify these high school students, we give these Mac J. Williams awards out, and I bet you 20% of those students don't even come to St. Petersburg College. Identify them early, make them go through some type of summer program. One identifies whether these kids may or may not, young people may or may not have a disability that we need to help them with, they can then say, I want to go to college, I like this, I like, right, well, I don't want to go to college, because this is kind of tough. I don't know this math, or I don't. Or they can say, yeah, I want to do this. So it helps the student also identify their track, and we can help them with that, with we can put them towards a workforce initiative or something else. But it also gets away from the feel of developmental ed. It's kind of, you're earning your way in, and we could do it at all levels. So say a young person has a bad first year, but applies to the nursing college, and they really can't get in with the grades that they have, but we have some type of summer program that says to them, if you earn your way in, you can get into the nursing program, okay? Now, they may very well go over there and whatever courses you have to take, not do well, then they can identify that, I'm not going to be a nurse, I need to find a different track. I think we're going to have to start pointing folks in the right direction, especially with the early alert stuff. We're going to have to start doing earlier alert with these young people and these folks that are going to St. Petersburg College, and say, here's what, you know, we can help you. And the other thing about this program is I've seen the model, Dr. Law, family, it's called LEAP. I don't know if you were a part of that in Tallahassee. And the young people that came in, they used it at law school too, and I'll tell you, the people that did it during the summer were far ahead of me when I got there, because they were able to identify, they were able to spot issues, they were, it taught them all the stuff they needed to know upfront. And then some people dropped out, some people came in. So that was the discussion that we had.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Gibbons. All right, Team Three.
I think I'm the last one, and you'll hear some of the same things, but our conversation's centered around the learning plan and new student orientation and the career center redesign. So first, and we've talked about this a little bit already, but you know, this idea that the learning plans need to be a part of the discussion every time the student has a discussion with anybody at the college. I mean, you know, if you're advising a student or whatever, you know, you press a button, their learning plan comes up, oh yeah, where are you at here? And let that be a common point of reference every time you have that discussion. The learning plans with the academic pathways and trying to help students kind of sort out in maybe a pre-programmed way, you know, whatever curriculum or whatever it is they want to be, kind of back to what Mr. Gibbons was talking about, whatever it is they want to be, they need to be able to see what it's going to take to get there.
That's right.
And then also, if their plan is to transfer to a USF or whatever, how successful will this plan transfer, and what will it do for me, and those type things, or is, you know, this is really what I was thinking about, and I'm not sure I want to do this, kind of gives them an opportunity at that point to say, maybe I need to go do something else. Let's see, number eight here, the orientation also is, I think we've talked, I think already up here, it's like everybody needs to go, I think, you know, the new student orientation gives an opportunity to kind of set the expectation right up front of what it's going to take to go here. Now, the question gets to be, who should be required to take it, and those type things, and those are questions yet to be answered, but I think new student orientation is a good opportunity to kind of set the tone with kind of what's going to be expected. Let's see. Next, and Jim talked about this a little bit, the extended orientation session, the curriculum is currently being developed, maybe a non-credit type course that everybody's going to be required to take as part of going to school here, is this is what you have to do. And then the last one is the placement services and focus, you know, continued focus on placing folks into the workforce, and then kind of what is the follow-up and the exit services to that that we need to do. And then the last one, advising includes discussion deals that might include non-credit training. And those are more of, you know, whether someone gets advised or realizes that, hey, maybe I'm not the person that needs to go after an AA or a BA degree, maybe I just need to go through a certificate program, maybe that's, you know, like Cisco program, whatever, you know, to do that. Or if we need to blend those certificates with the academic degree to further enhance their opportunity. So, there you go.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Great stuff. Any other discussion related to college experience? A lot of alignment across the teams.
I have those numbers.
Jesse?
I need my phone. Jesse's showing off. You got numbers?
I got numbers. I got numbers. I got numbers.
So we had, it was about 13.1% of our students this term that got early alerts actually term withdraw. That means they withdrew from all their classes. That's a comparison, for all of our students, it was about 5% for our total enrollment that term withdraw. So out of the 1,603 term withdrawals we had for this term, 20% of them received early alerts. But keep in mind that our early alerts are focused on our newer students coming to the college, so it doesn't necessarily cover all of our students in terms of what classes are taken.
All right, let's move to the next topic, and Team One, the advising model. Looks like you gave some good energy to that.
Let's see. Advising model. One of the things that we were talking about was...
Advising model, one of the things that we were talking about was technology and how much of an asset it can be, but the reality is, at the end of the day, if you don't have a quality human being at the end of the, at the end of the, I don't care whether it's a screen, whether it's a keyboard, whether it's in person, if you don't have a person there who can actually give proper advice and sympathize and encourage this young human being or older human being to come along and continue their success, all the technology in the world isn't going to make a difference. One of the things that was pointed out, which I thought was fantastic, was then on the flip side, using technology for folks who are disabled or who do online classes. But one of the things that we did note was we wanted to make sure that, from an online perspective, are these people responsible? Are they prepared to be online? You know, being online takes, it takes just that little bit more to be successful because nobody's babysitting you. And so, but we wanted to make sure that, you know, we have all these fantastic assets on our campuses, but are we providing the same services to our disabled, to our folks who are online? And so, that's it. And then the only other thing that I added, which isn't up there, is brutal honesty. One of the things that we need to start talking to people at a very, when they first come through our door is if they tell us they want to be a nurse or they tell us they want a career in something where they have to get licensed or certified or something like that, if you can't get certified because you had a petty theft when you were 19, they need to know. If you can't, and somebody can say all day long, "I've had a sponge" or "I got a withhold" or "I got whatever," they need to know that minute before they spend a nickel, well, who am I kidding? Before they borrow a nickel and before they, I mean, seriously, we, this is when we need to tell them. We don't need to tell them a year into a program, we, you know, look, we don't need to, and I don't know how you do it, because I know that somewhere legally it has to be done. But I don't know, but these are the things that will not allow you to become, you know, these are non-negotiable. But that's my brutal honesty.
Thank you. Any other discussions related to advising model?
I'm sorry, and integrating it with career services. That's, I didn't see that up there.
Thank you.
We introduced a term this morning that, I'm not sure, it may be the only thing that we haven't had a chance to talk to before. We're calling it, it's academic pathways. And it is pre-populating student plans as students come into the registration system and how you get through the institution. So just like an advisor might say to you, "Here's my recommendation in these funds," and you say, "No, I really want something different." Okay, you own it, but we're giving a lot more guidance. These courses are first, these courses are enacted, they're not the best one. We're working on toxic pairs. Don't take these two at the same time if you look this way. A lot more work on how students get through. Alignment of, we have too many choices. And what's the number, 17,000, probably whatever we've got? Too many courses for students to say, "Pick one," you know? We have to give them much more guidance. Take this one, then this one, then this one. I'm sorry, Mr. Gibbons.
No, I think you're right on it, though. I think that, I hear a common theme that this orientation should be mandatory. But I also think that the orientation that's mandatory should give these folks, whoever, young people, middle-aged, a real good look at what it's going to take to go to college. And it gives us an opportunity to assess each one individually on whether they are college-ready. And if they're not, then we can give them some real good advice on whether or not, whether to borrow that nickel to go forward or, you know, maybe you need to do this before you do go into this college-level course. I don't think that's going to happen with developmental ed being out the door. So, we're going to have to be way more proactive on how we bring the student in, how we capture them, and then get as much information about them as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Lauralee, on, one of the areas, as we've brought up, the workforce piece, is to make sure that we have that level of student services. If somebody says, "I want a Cisco certification," if there's a condition that will keep you from ultimately earning that thing, we want to have that discussion upfront. But that's a whole range of additional counseling and services and interaction with the student at a critical time. And Jim Conley's having to develop that on the non-credit side of the house because we're putting a great deal of additional energy in there.
Okay.
So, these are serious issues for us, not to waste people's time and do that. But, here's what I'm hearing, sir. We kind of lost our focus on who the new student orientation was for. We were using the cutoff score for the entry placement as the gateway to who gets into new student orientation. Legislature cut that out and we kind of let it get away from us. We need to re-center and have a discussion that we'll bring back to you as to, what's the mandatory nature of this? How many can we serve? What do we want to do? We're not there, we're not ready for that. I think the second piece then is the intervention with students. How do we say to students, "Here's what you can take, here's what you can't take"? Once again, we overreached ourselves a little bit and as we've retrenched, we've lost a little bit of our focus on the various kind of intervention. You've never passed four courses, why would we keep letting you sign up for four courses? You know, that's.
And that's a hard discussion.
And yet we now have the tools to work on that. So I think that's part of it. And then, make the learning plans more useful. We now have 17,000 students on learning plans. How are we using them? What's the nature of that? How can that capture student energy, student input as well as us using them as a one-way communication? We ought to use that as a two-way communication. So those are current discussions that you should watch us to do, but your guidance today picked those weaknesses in what we have. Who's in orientation? What does it really look like? What are the interventions and how fast? I was sharing with Bridget that the coaching system, we're limited, we can't scale it up fast enough. We're finding out that we're not getting to everybody every week. In the peak weeks, faculty are saying, "Help me with this one," and we're getting 300, 400 hits a week. Well, making 400 contacts in that week is a real challenge for us. How are we getting, so as we continue to develop our communication tools and other kinds of things? But that's, it doesn't do us any good to have 600 alerts if we can't even get to 300 people. You know, we're just then disappointing more people, we don't want to do that. That's the challenge on that one, we don't have a great strategy on that yet. Watch us to address it. Your input, you've hit the key.
I was going to say, with a strategic session like this, I really would appreciate the student's perspective. I mean, we talked about learning plans, but I would like to have some perspective from the students that are getting the alerts. You know, they're on the learning plans.
I have a, just a.
You know, I'd, like you said, I'm just curious if it's working, if it's not. Obviously, it's working and, you know, we're proud, but what they'd like to see. I'd like to get their perspective.
Just a story. Lady talks to me, my daughter's taking sign language, but she's taking math, she didn't need to take math. Whatever the story was. Hooked her up with the right people, she was pre-learning plan. She now has a learning plan. She sent me an email, her daughter sent me an email. Couldn't be happier, they have a path. They have, I mean, you know, look, daughter's happy because daughter's not taking math, but that's another story. But the mother is thrilled that there is a path. There is a list of courses that say, "These are what you need to complete. This one must be completed before this one." Before that, you had a, I hope she's a young woman, but she's a child floundering. So I can just tell you from that experience that I had, and that's just one.
Yeah, no, I think it's working and everything. I just, I, occasionally you learn a lot from the people that it's not working for. Someone that had many alerts and still doing the same thing.
I agree, Bob. I think that we can get sometimes caught up in our offices and forget that the user, the end-user is the most important person. And we should talk to them about what they're like. I bet you that they would probably want to see what Dale was talking about. How do I get to Florida State? Or how do I get to the University of Florida? How do I get to USF? What do I have to make in each one of these courses statistically based upon what USF accepts? How do I get, I bet you they'll want to see some of that stuff there.
All right. We asked for rich collaborative discussion and we haven't, well done. Any comments on intervention strategies from Team One?
My only comment is, is that mandatory's okay. You want to come back and play in our sandlot? Mandatory's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Got to be serious.
All right. I think, Mike, let's move it down to the next category. See if we had any other contributions. Career Center redesign.
Says it all. We just think that career center, career counseling is just as important as academic counseling. If they don't go hand-in-hand, then there's a disconnect.
Okay.
And then my concept of brutal honesty, that if you're, whatever we're going to be able to be certified, let's not send them down the road back.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let's move to round two. And if you'd like to get your just-the-facts ready, Dr. Cooper, if you can take us through round two.
All right. Round two deals with a number of academic areas that we are working on. And as you heard earlier, we're now in the position to have all the courses transferred over into our new learning management system, all faculty trained. And we are continuing to train our students so that they will be ready in the spring with all of our courses using the new learning management system. So what's next? Well, if we want to stay a frontrunner in the online education area, we want to move our courses into what are considered best practices in the field of online education. And these are called Quality Matters Standards. They're nationally recognized. And so we want to work on assisting our faculty in making sure that the courses are engaging and interactive for our students. And so we are going to work on building 30 to 40 courses a semester so that we can get all 530 different courses, at least one version of them, up to Quality Matters Standards as quickly as possible. 58 of these courses are responsible for 50% of our online enrollment, so those are the courses we'll be working on first. We've also recognized that 46% of our students take at least one online course. And we have seen a difference in the success rate for those courses when we compare them to our on-campus courses. The withdrawal rate or failure is about almost 17% for online, where it's more around 12% for our on-campus courses. So we know there's more that we can do to assist our students. So some of the things that we want to begin looking at is student readiness. Are students ready when they sign up for an online course? Do they understand what the modality requires to be successful? And we also want to see if we can identify risk factors so we can reach out to those students who may be more at risk early on and help them to achieve that readiness as quickly as possible. We've also come to recognize that students come to us with all different kinds of backgrounds and not all of them are ready to use the various academic technologies successfully. When we look at our help systems that are currently available to students to assist them when they have technical difficulties, it comes from three different departments. And so there's limited coordination. We think we can, we know we can do better, so we want to centralize some of that. And we also want to be proactive in not assuming that all students maybe understand the Microsoft suite or the new updates. And so we want to make sure that that's available to them in our learning centers. If we look at the 500 different seminars that have been produced for our students in our learning centers, only 10% of them had to do with technology this past fall. So we know, again, that we can do better. And we're already in communication with Joe Leopold, who's over our learning centers, to see what we can do to increase that. Another area, strategic enrollment growth. Obviously, our guaranteed schedule is based on increasing our student semester hours 3%. But another real important aspect associated with our strategic enrollment growth is to ensure that we keep the students who are here. And so our deans have created their progression retention completion plan. And one of the most important parts associated with that is, of course, as you've already heard, the academic pathways. We took this summer and had an institute where we had all our deans, chairs, and faculty together. And we worked on mapping out, step by step, what is the best progression of courses? What is the best gen-ed selection to ensure that students will be successful as they go from one course to the next? What courses do you not want to take together? Which ones should come before others? All of that is mapped out. So we have a recommended pathway for each of our programs, which we think, along with our learning plan system, will create a much better success for our students because they'll know exactly what they should be doing and when. One of the other things that we learned as our deans and chairs looked at the withdrawal rates as we progressed through the semester is that we saw for our gateway courses, a higher rate in the online modality compared to our on-campus. And so we know there's more we can do there in regards to improving student success in the online modality. And we also saw that in the gateway courses, a third of the withdrawals were occurring with three or fewer instructors. So we know that there are things that we need to do to work with those instructors on how they can improve and finding where the blockades are within the courses and what we can do differently.
Sorry. That was your outside voice.
It's okay. It's okay. One of the other things that we obviously are working on is our new academic programs and certificates. We want to make sure that, particularly in our workforce programs, that if there's an opportunity to earn an industry certification, that's actually embedded in the program. And you'll see that there are a number of new certificates coming onboard in 2015-16 that address exactly that. We also are bringing on two new associate of science degrees, biomedical engineering technology and biomedical technology. And we have found that there are currently 309 jobs that would be available to students who graduate from these programs. And in the 2016-2021 five-year period, that is expected to grow to 495. So we, again, are responding to community, responding to where the jobs are and what kinds of programs we can provide our students with in that regard. As far as the support for our adjunct instructors, we have 889 adjuncts who are teaching just over 1,700 of our courses, so that's about two per adjunct. Whereas our 389 faculty are teaching over 2,500 courses, so that's about six to seven a faculty member. Their base load is five, they can do two supplemental. But we know that if we want to maintain the quality of our programs, we need to provide the support to our adjuncts. So what we're looking at creating is a certification process for our adjuncts. We want to, first of all, make sure that they have the necessary training at various levels, beginning with the HR required trainings, then college-wide trainings through our Center of Excellence for Teaching and Learning, and then if there are discipline-specific trainings that they need to have. Maybe they teach in a science lab and there are certain things that they need to be aware of. Or they're one of our nursing clinical instructors. But we want that to be a formal process that is embedded into the adjunct evaluation and that it will also require that they do something every year to maintain that certification. We feel that this is a way to provide them with the support because they are part of our team and they are what, in many instances, allow us to have the size of programs that we have. Thank you.
And thanks very much. Jesse, will you, can I queue up? I wanted to just share with the board, coming out of Jesse's conference and working with some other national providers, we are about ready to acquire some very powerful front-end software that addresses the onboarding of students. So you would see, this is what the student and the advisor would see at the point of registration. How much of your program has already been completed? What are the planned courses? You can explore other degrees to see if you want to change major, what would happen to you along the way? All of the work behind the scenes then. Well, I love this part, though. It tells you then what your onboarding kinds of programs would be. And it's a much more robust tool, students can use it themselves. It's not, once again, getting stuff out from behind the curtain. Jesse?
You have another good, can you flip to the next one?
Yeah, the next one is even more powerful, I think. Jesse, go ahead.
This gets into the actual planned courses, so we can start to look at courses by semester.
I'm sorry. You can start to look at, again, this is on all screens, so we can see as we go along. You can see the information as we look at courses by semester. You can see. see what they've got, when they've earned credits, various requirements, like foreign language requirement. And Kristi, if you go to the next one. This gives you a good picture. So you saw before where you can quickly look at other degrees. But supposedly, somebody's in a degree program, and they're, maybe they're not being as successful. We say, here's a possible alternative. Now we can do side-by-side comparisons to kind of see, here's where you're at in your degree program. But if you do switch, here's where you could be in another program. Or here's an embedded certificate. Here's where you are in your AS, but here's your progress towards your embedded certificate. So it makes it very powerful as we can make the comparisons. We're working on this now. We hope to eventually start to partner with USF, where then you could not only look at our programs, but you could eventually look at, here's where you are at USF's four-year degree and start making some of those comparisons.
We are at the point, I, I think I gave Jesse the go-ahead to get the paperwork in order for us to acquire that, that software. We think we have everything behind the scenes that we can just drop in and, and get this up and running ASAP so that both students and advisors then would have a much more graphic and user-friendly approach to the kinds of dialogue we want at, at the front door. So we'll keep you informed on that. But we were trying to get this moving as rapid as we can.
Comes with the transcript from another college or a couple?
Yeah. Well, once we bring your transcript in and we put, put it into our system, that's exactly right. That's exactly what happens. So, so once, once they're inside our system, this is a front end that sits in front of it. And you can, you can do the what-ifs all the time for how that would, would best work. The other side of that is, what's the best way to get through, too? Because the other, there's two sides. One is, by the software, that makes sense. Great. The other is, develop the predictive models that say, here's the best way to get through. Don't do these courses ever together. Do these courses together, and you'll go through. So we have a two-pronged approach. One is, increase, increase our predictive ability for how students should go through. Second, then, is to communicate that directly to students. I just want to give you a heads-up. We're moving forward on this. It's too powerful not to.
That'll be on line one.
End of spring?
We're in the contract stuff now.
But.
My guess is you'll have a plan together. You'll work with Dr. Vito and the team on a plan piece. My guess is we'll probably, you'll probably later in the spring semester where everything's done.
Worth pursuing, no. In the pilot at Austin Community College, they put it in, 94, they, they had a pilot of, I don't know, 40% of the advisors were going to use it. 94% of the advisors ended up using it before the pilot was over. Students jumped over all the advisors. They started doing it themselves. I mean, it's all, it's totally intuitive from a student's standpoint. So we want to get it in places. We, we've got the guts. We're ready to go. Devon, I'm sorry, cut you off.
Will the program allow for us to tailor-make some of this stuff for ourselves, as you and I were just talking about? So one of our biggest feeder schools is going to be USF. So say a person wants to get in the psychology program at USF, they'll say, here's the courses that you need to take to get accepted into the psychology program, and here's the grades that you need to have in those individual courses.
I, I think the answer to your question is yes. The predictive piece is what's important there, for us to load that in. And as we do that, it can remember anything, but we have to tell it to do that. Because it might be different. Take this course if you go into USF Engineering. Take that course if you go into FSU. Or don't take it. They'll never, they want to teach it there when you get there. It's not worth taking it here, kind of thing. Those are, but we've got to tell it, and then it can remember that. Okay? We're not quite there, but we have the tools to do it. I'm real excited about this. I want to get off, but you asked us to work on the, the onboarding, the pathing, the guidance. We're starting to line up our best thinking with the students' best thinking and, and move it forward. Pretty excited about it. We've got the money in our hand. We've already figured out the financing. We'll keep you informed, though. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we are armed and ready for round two. So please find your new team destination and your new A-team. We'll play a little music for your traveling pleasure, and we'll meet you there. And I think in the interest of time, we'll just ask you all, as we go through each category, to pick two or three, maybe instead of going through the full list, two or three of the most important.
No, they're all important. No, I'm sorry.
And Devon's going to present again.
No, Bob's presenting this time.
It's kind of fun.
Listen to the master.
I know.
Oh, re-enrollment. Oh, re-enrollment.
That's fine.
It's okay. Just wait until one more board member gets back.
No, I'm good.
And then in the interest of time, I think we will kind of, you know, condense rounds three and four. Community partnerships and organizational health.
That'll be easy.
Unless you want to have a working lunch, I'm sure I could cater that in. Okay. All right. So online revitalization, that was a robust bucket. We had a lot in the bucket.
Let's take two, just approximate.
You want us to start?
Shall we move, move forward? So Team One, online revitalization. Just pick two or three of the, the most important items, you think?
Well, one of the things our teams talked about is the online advising. Kind of dovetails what the last session did, that we felt like it needs to be as robust as what we do in person. And right now, the, you know, society's, it's a 24/7 type of thing. So it should be as robust, and the people doing it should be as trained, but as accessible to, we talked about call centers. We talked about 24/7 now. Looking towards those type of, you know, amenities for, for our students.
Yes. And it'll have some budgetary impact, but we need to be prepared for it. And it'll be very helpful to make sure that our students are successful because, remember, our students are not, a lot of them are non-traditional. So if it happens at midnight, they have to have a question, then we need to be able to answer it very quickly at midnight, you know. So.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Team One. Team Two, online revitalization?
Back just in time.
Any highlights? Maybe two or three highlights?
Um, I didn't hear the others, but I think the, you know, we talked about making sure that we had some type of assessment in place for readiness for online courses. I mean, just looking at the numbers, the stats, and those kind of things. And it's not just from a maturity or, or ability to do it, but it's from a technology standpoint. And, you know, kind of, you can't take an online class unless you have internet access and the right computing ability and those kind of things. So talked about that. That was probably a lot of our conversation on the online revitalization was around the readiness piece.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Team Three. Ms. Bello?
She was headed the same way, same place I was.
Yes, we could wait and move on.
Bridget was pre-investigated, so let's come back to that.
Very good. We'll keep you on the edge of your seats. And we'll move to the next topic, which is.
There she is.
Oh, well, okay, see?
Right on time.
Let's go back to online revitalization. And Ms. Bello, if you could share a couple of the highlights in this area.
From my walk back from the lady there?
Would you?
What am I, I'm sorry.
This is the online revitalization category and.
Discussion that we had, what were the key points that we discussed on revitalization?
Oh, a lot. We talked about the fail rate and whether or not students were ready and identifying the right students for the online classes, making sure that they actually have a computer, some of the basic stuff that we assume that maybe they don't. And doing a better job of closing the door, which I think they start in spring on registration because a lot of it is late students that are filling out their schedule with online classes and predictably don't do well at that point. What did I miss?
Thank you. Shall we scroll down?
I want to talk around the key issue. We, faculty have given us guidance that they're concerned about who gets in. There's a, there's, there's questions about who ends up in an online course. And they're then held responsible for the success of that student. And I think we can do a better job making sure not everybody gets there by, everybody who's there is there on purpose and is prepared to do that. On the other hand, I think there's a responsibility for the faculty member to be a great deal more proactive in saying, here's how my course is organized. Here's how it works. Here's, here's who succeeds in my course. Here's who doesn't succeed in my course, how that works. And I think there's a push and pull there. And we've got that teed up, but we're still circling it in some parts of the discussion. I think your guidance today will help us move that discussion forward.
I think we also need, though, we need, we need to accept that it's okay to say no.
Yeah.
No, you're not ready for this. And I think that, I'm not an educator, but you all are kind, nice people. And you don't want to tell people no. It's okay to say no. You are not ready for this. You are not going to succeed at this.
She's not talking about Bill Law.
I was going to say.
She's talking about the rest of you.
I mean, all kidding aside, it's okay to say no.
Bill, you make a good point. The instructors feel like they are responsible for the students in the online courses. Maybe in the orientation process, we have instructors that come in and say, here's how you're an effective student. You do this. You take notes. You do this. You know, and let them be a part of that orientation process so they take ownership from the beginning, or they've given some key tools to this young person or this new student coming in and saying, this is how you're going to be successful in most of your classes.
Yeah. Oh, and I think if Leslie was, Leslie, I think getting that information to the advisors as well, so they can be very proactive, literally instructor by instructor. These students, you do not look like somebody who will succeed in Dr. Law's course, okay?
And we may have to do an online, we talked about me doing mandatory study skills class or study whatever, SLS, what do we call it? We may have a, you've got to take a nine-hour or 10-hour online study skill assessment slash class before you can start an online class. Because candidly, if they can't complete that, they're not going to really succeed.
Right. It's a self-correcting, self-identifying problem.
Yeah. One of the things that we talked about is just similar to what our advisors did with our developmental changes, is that they were given scripts, and here's how you talk to the student who's in the flexible placement, who may not college-ready, and how to advise them. And in the same way, I think we need to help our advisors gain those skills so that they can properly advise students in regards to the online modality as well.
We literally built a script. When the student said this, we said this. When the student said this, we said this, just so that we were sure we were having exactly the right dialogue. I think we have to do the same thing online in a lot of cases. Forty-six percent of the students took at least one online course. So the reality is, our students are using that to round out their programs. That's how they are accelerating through.
Seventeen percent of them withdrew.
And 17% withdrew. That's, so you see what the problem is. The throughput gets reduced significantly. Okay?
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks for the input. That's, I don't think we have a more important problem to resolve than that. As we, as we do the whole online revitalization, we don't want to leave that issue behind. We're moving in tandem with the whole revitalization.
Thank you. Let's go to the next topic, which was strategic enrollment growth. Last Team One, if you had one or two that were highlights in that discussion.
Well, we centered our discussion around the easy way to grow enrollment is to retain the students we have. So it was all about retention.
Re-recruit.
Re-recruit. Yeah, it should be, re-recruit our own students. So we had many ideas of that. I, my understanding is, we do have faculty in the bachelor's program that serve as faculty advisors. We discussed, Mr. Gibbons would like to see the results of their advisors and, you know, their retention rates.
We, we assess everybody except for the folks who are most responsible for people being here. I've never heard anybody say, I leave, I'm never coming back to St. Pete College because I don't like Bill Law. What they say is, I don't like this instructor. So we should be evaluating instructors and advisors on how successful they are with dealing with students. So, you know, if instructors have, you know, 100% dropout rate after taking their course, then we, that's probably not the person to be on our campus trying to work with our students. So, I mean, we need to really take a hard look. If we're going to re-recruit students, we want them going out being ambassadors after they take courses on our campuses to say, you know, this, you don't want it to be easy, but you want it to be fair. And you want to be able to assess the advisors. This was Stan Vito's idea, which I thought was very good, is assess advisors on their success, but also instructors on withdrawal, dropout, failures, that kind of stuff.
After all, instructors are the ones that have the students the most amount of time. They have the biggest contact, the biggest influence. So engaging them in retention, we felt would be a strategic uplift.
Great. Thank you, Team One. Team Two, strategic enrollment growth. Do you have one or two that you'd like to highlight?
Well, we talked, we kind of talked about number one and two on here kind of together. But in, in this area, we did talk a little bit about the failure rates and, and the retention related to the number of folks who withdraw and kind of the, there's probably a need to maybe slice the, the data a little bit finer to find out the whys behind, you know, especially the one that we've got, you know, three or less instruct, you know, three instructors responsible for 33%. You know, what, when you kind of comb through the data, what is the real issue there? Is it the course? Is it the instructor? Is it a combination of both, or what? I mean, Laura Lee just wanted to go ahead and just fire them all.
That's what I said.
I was wondering why she was looking down.
Just looking down, Bill, and quiet.
But I think we need to figure out why. And, you know, the other thing on here, too, when you talk about retention, and we're allowing gateway courses and things like that to be taught online, you know, is that really a good thing to do? I know you can't really say no, we're, because we're all nice people. Maybe not. I don't know. But, but I, I think we got to look at that. And, you know, are we setting up the student and ourselves to fail when we, when we do things that kind of push somebody or allow somebody to go down a path unadvised? So.
The only other thing I would add is, and Bob had talked about this earlier, is I'd like, I'd like us to talk to the students. That the students that withdraw and the students that don't do well in the classes, why do they fail? It goes back to slicing up the data. But I do, I think that that's, not only do we talk to the ones that weren't successful, but we talk to the ones that were successful. What, what did you do that made you successful? What did the professor do that made you successful? But with that, I mean, you know, so it's a matter of kind of talking to the students. And I realize, that's a matter of getting their cooperation. I mean, I get that. But I, I would also like to see some input from them because that rang true to me when he said it earlier.
Are we doing, are we doing some focus group stuff?
We've done a lot of focus groups and surveys and emails as well. I'm sorry. We've done a lot of focus groups as part of the business process review to get ready to how we communicate with students with CRM. But the students that we've asked were a lot of those types that you're speaking to, students that have withdrawn. We've sent them emails and, and also asked them to tell us why. So we've got some information from there. Of course, the ones who have left, we don't have as much responses from as the ones who are here, but we do have some data we could share. And it's a complete report, so I'll make sure to provide that.
I believe in focus group is very powerful stuff. When you hear it from the students, it really gets your attention. It sounds different.
Thank you. Team Three, did you have any highlights in the strategic?
Well, to further that, I said the same thing. In the real world, we would fire those people. And, you know, anecdotally, I keep looking at my phone this morning, and I said, I'm waiting for a Western Civ final grade from my daughter. And he goes, Western Civ? Like, the professor's horrible. So she says to me this morning, if I had just checked ahead, there's all this information out there for all these past students that say, don't take that course with that professor. So I don't think we have to ask them. I think it's out there. We just have to read it. Rate my professor. It is out there, which she did for the spring. She read all the professors. It's out there. And I think if you have, maybe that's where you start. If you have a third of your withdrawals from three professors, go read Rate My Professor and then say, guys, something's not working. So I think that was an important part. And then we also talked about the, the pathway part is going to integrate back to what we talked about earlier with the My Learning Plan, which I think is huge. I mean, that can make such a difference for, for students, first time in college especially. So I think that's really exciting.
Thank you. All right. Let's go to the next category. New academic certificates and programs. And just, looks like Team Two had some good input on this area. And just, looks like Team Two had some good input on this area.
You know, the comments here is, you know, this stuff is, is real-time. And so we just need to make sure that we stay plugged into the community through whatever organizations or industries and that we understand kind of what their needs are to make sure that we're kind of pushing people or advising people in the right way with certificates or degrees or things like that to be able to be viable workers, you know, going forward. And, and that, that from an advising standpoint, that we're, and we've already talked about this, that we're making sure that in the advising part, we help folks understand or we understand the folks that are cut out for degrees and those that are maybe more certificate-type students so that we're doing them justice also in getting them, you know, the right way into the workforce.
Thank you. Any other comments related to this category?
I think, I think we do a very, I think we heard earlier that, I think if we had to point to something, this is like our strong suit, that we respond well to the citizens in terms of workforce and academic programs and certificates. So I think we do this very well. I think Dr. Law does a good job of working with not only the workforce, but the actual industries to make sure that we are an active player.
Great. Thank you.
Governor, I think the fair, thank you for that. But I think the work that we've done with Temple Bay Business Journal and their forums, I think the fair assessment would be, what you do, you do fine. There's way more to do. Is that a fair assessment of what we hear over and over and over again? We're happy to have all your graduates. Do you understand there's still hundreds of jobs unfilled? How are we going to get those jobs filled? Healthcare, IT, trade logistics, whatever it might be. So I'm happy to have the work that we're doing. It's fine. But picking up the pace seems to me to be what the challenge for us is.
Well, we also talked about the stuff that's non-certification. Skills that are out there that are showing up and burning glass. That, how do we address that and do as good of a job? I mean, it's really exciting for me because of the workforce partnership to feel like we're moving the needle. I mean, we're actually going to be able to say, we got the software and there's four-hundred-and-fifty certifications available and we're going to teach a hundred of them this year and a hundred of them next year and, you know, grow to that. But what about the soft skills? What about the things that there aren't classes, that are not certification-related? When you're, I'm jealous because I don't hire people with certificates. So what about all the jobs I can't fill that also have those skills that aren't being taught? And how we get those on that same move the needle.
Excellent. All right. Our final category is adjunct instructor support. Looks like we had two, again, from Team Two.
You know, just really talked about here, really what, what we had here and that, you know, there is some value, I think, to making sure that the adjuncts are, you know, have some minimum certification or some type of ongoing training to make sure that they're ready to do the things that they need to do here. And then also the, the support that we provide ongoing. When you look at the numbers here, I mean, we wouldn't get the job done without the adjuncts. And, you know, the comment I made is when I was in college, I sought the adjuncts as my instructors because they brought a different perspective to the classroom than, nothing, nothing bad, but the academic trainers who were really kind of skilled in teaching the, the material, but from their background, which was academic. I mean, I always found it good to get folks from outside. So we need to, we need to do what we can do to make sure that we're providing them with the support and things that they need to get their job done.
Very good. Thank you.
One other thing. We're going, I love the idea of a certification process, but one of the things that we could offer them is, is as adjuncts, if I'm a student and I only take two courses at night and from adjuncts, and I have a problem, is to come up with some kind of a reward system for certification, reward system, however we want to call it, for them to get to know the college, for them to be able to also, I mean, in essence, they may be the most contacted student has with St. Pete College. And in all candor, if I'm an adjunct and I, I used to teach at the Police Academy many, many moons ago. Someone came up to me and said, how do I do X? I'm looking for an eight-hundred number. I mean, I don't know. And so I think maybe, you know, incorporating them in the college and teaching them, here's, here's this, here's that, here's what. And if, if nothing else, they know what direction to point them in as opposed to, hey, there's a big building on, on our Clearwater campus.
Excellent. Great input. All right.
And so let's, let's calibrate time.
Yes.
Let's be sure we've got two topics and none of the one is the student topics. Let's just make sure people are comfortable with what we do next. Make adjustments now. Still have time to do it if you want.
I was going to suggest, in the interest of time, we combine rounds three and four into a single round and hear both presentations right now, one on organizational health and the other on community partnership, deploy into teams and address both in our teams. Will that work? All right.
So do we just go to Team Three?
Yes, in a moment. We're going to set you up for success. I'll ask Dr. Duncan to come and present on organizational health and then Dr. Law on community partnership.
Thanks, Andrea. Key to organizational health, obviously, is communication. And two of the initiatives in here address not only how we communicate amongst ourselves, but also in most key with students. And two of our, two of our, the bigger initiatives that are underway right now and that we certainly can use any feedback is our website redesign project and our customer relationship management system project. The web, the website redesign, I think Diana was telling me this morning, we have over thirty thousand pages that have just accumulated for the last fifteen years or so. And one of the, one of the things that we're looking to do there is not only clean it up, but to distinguish between that information that should be internal and that information that should be external. Right now, it's sort of a hodgepodge. So a big project. We have a June two thousand and fifteen launch date, doing a lot of work on it now, but it's huge. We have lots more to do. Customer relationship management is an easy concept to describe, but none of us have used one. And so this is one of those examples where tech, the technology part, you don't just plug it in and it does all the work for you. There's, there's a lot of our learning how to use it effectively. And we've, we've initiated the RFP. We're looking at the vendors, the different systems. But we certainly, we'd want to have that in, at least in place to the point that we are in a training mode by May two thousand and fifteen. But both of these are, are just huge projects. And so we're looking for any, any suggestions. The next two, the Leadership Academies and the Delta Academy is, you've heard a lot about that. So I won't spend a lot of time on it. Other than we're launching in January and I think there's some interest there in how do we best involve the board in those programs and get, get feedback. So we're interested in, in what you have to say there. The, you've also heard on the career service revitalization tool. We, we are developing the tool. That's one of our goals for the upcoming, for the spring. Bigger than that, though, is, is to incorporate, to expand and enhance the career path navigational tools. We haven't done enough there. I think we've talked a lot about, we want to make sure that, that they have learning plans and training plans, but, but we want to make sure we're properly providing employees with tools to say, just like we are with the students in their learning plan, how does our plan get you from, from point A to point B and so on? So obviously, financial health and budget planning is not a project. It is something we will do over the next six months. But I want to give you a few quick points to event that everything we've done today involves finances to some extent. We're, we're looking at a very positive financial outlook for, for next year. We have a strong recurring infrastructure piece, equipment, technology, so on, over ten million now, and a very healthy fund, fund balance. One thing I want to focus on, though, and for time, and that is the third bullet down under next steps, and that is program cost analysis. We want to incorporate some of that into our planning process next year and want some feedback and some discussion around, if we're going to, if we're going to try to compare our programs and do some cost analysis, what are the factors that are most important or that we want to put at the forefront of consideration? We provided you with some information that are some of the common factors that are used in program cost analysis. Obviously, some are more significant, salary analysis, to what extent do programs require non-standard facilities, non-standard equipment, additional staffing, market? How does the market hiring rates impact those programs? So we'd like to have some discussion about what your thoughts are on some of those variables in analyzing our programs, because we would like to bring that back to you during the budget process and have some discussion. We've also included information on what our year-end projection is. That includes the, the increase right now or the one-time payment that is coming in December as well as where we think we will be on July first. This is not considering any increase in state funding right now or in tuition. But we do know that in January, we do have some distance fee adjustments in January that will provide some increased revenue. So that's just for your thought process. And so I kind of went fast on that. So we want to move on to the next.
I want to be sure, Mr. Chairman, when you took over in, in the summer in August, you, you said one of the areas that you'd like to start developing and focus on is some program cost. And it's a fairly, it's easy to understand once you know the pieces. And maybe over the next few months, we could devote a little time at the board meetings to have people raise the level of expertise of the board as to how to really view costs and then see where it leads. As I often say, as long as I have a nursing program, I think I know what my most expensive program's going to be. Okay? But I don't hear anybody say, do less nursing because it costs too much. Now, if we want to expand it, we have to have a discussion about what does that look like and where does that come from? I think that, so, so I think there's some, how do you measure cost versus effectiveness is really what happens and we, and we can do that. The, I sort of played the partnership part and I'm a little uncertain. Again, we have hundreds of relationships throughout the community. And some of them are Susan with her programs, dealing with the law profession and finding places for students and they're manageable and they take some, some time and energy. But some of them get big in a hurry. So we're dealing with a big day of service grant that we propose. And it, you know, some parts work really well, some parts generate criticism that we wish we didn't hear. There's a major initiative coming out of the mayor's office on the twenty-twenty plan. A good part of the twenty-twenty plan focuses on workforce kinds of things. But how do we participate without owning the plan? How do we not get pulled into all of the side discussions about that? And I need some, some guidance from the board as to how you want to proceed, what information you need on the nature of our partnerships and what can we bring you on a monthly, quarterly basis? How do you want to calibrate those? How do you want us to keep doing it, do less? What do you hear when you're in the community? You know, everybody has a, has a relationship with us, but if it's too much, it's too much. And I'm losing my center on that issue. I mean, I'm a, I'm a good collaborator, but if it's starting to detract, then we need to pull it back in a little bit. And I think I need some guidance from the board as to how you would want us to, to get that regularized. You go first. Now, you know, we've got all the healthcare relationships. I just had a working lunch this week with somebody on the, on the Baycrest board. They want to talk about expanding healthcare programs. They, you know, those partnerships are vitally important, some of the educational partnerships, Bob. So let's have a little discussion and then give us a little guidance as to how we can raise our level of sophistication and commitment. Okay? You want to do group three, everybody go to their group three home and we'll do whatever discussion that, that allows. Okay.
And we will allot ten minutes for organizational health discussion and ten minutes for community partnerships. Very good. We can kill the music and we will, while it's fresh in our minds, we'll review community partnerships, get some high-level thoughts. Let's start with the first bucket that you just completed, strategic community partnerships. And Team One, if there were one or two or three areas that we would want to highlight?
Was that like us?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You know, we talked about making sure that we stick to partnerships that fit our core mission and if not, maybe sometimes we do have to say no.
Amen.
And I think good example, Bill, that you mentioned, you said you were meeting with BayCare, probably Steve Mason or somebody like that. You know, we supply nurses. That's a great one, right there. And, but they may not all be that, you know, that direct. Partnerships need to stay tuned into the community and the business needs in the community. I think that's very important. It's kind of in alignment with what the one that we just said. But they just, just need to make sure that the partnerships align with what we're doing and that they're specific to the community and the areas, maybe where the campuses are and where those needs are.
Excellent. Thank you.
Maybe that would be an area where we could produce a quarterly report. I mean, quarterly, we send you the thing of contracts we've already signed. I, you know, I find that to be, it's good for a public body to do that, but they're already signed and gone. U.S. Board members can keep track of it. But I like the checklist idea. Maybe what we ought to do is have a couple of metrics of what are the, what are the ones that have taken time? Again, if the programs are doing internships or whatnot, those aren't the ones that I'm concerned about. Those we want more of. But when, when our names is associated with the partnership, I want to be sure everybody's comfortable with that.
And it's something you can be successful at.
Yeah, that's right.
We broke ours into, we broke ours into foundation partnerships, workforce partnerships and community partnerships. And I think what, what we, what we were saying was with the idea of a checklist or a rubric or something is, is if it doesn't meet our core goal, just, just being able to say we're a partner with someone doesn't bring anything to our table. And we've got a lot of people who do a great job. And what I see a lot of is, is that we get dumped on, bluntly put. And we end up doing a lot of work that we shouldn't have to and that's not fair.
Well, people see us as deep pocket. I mean, we always have organizational skill. We always have personnel that we can throw into it. We're pretty creative on some things. I mean, we're a good partner. There's no question from other perspectives. But if it starts sapping our core strengths, then it's, it's really not in our just. I'll tee it up a little bit and keep you informed. I never want you to be surprised in the community about a high-visibility partnership that you hadn't heard about from me. Okay? So that's my.
I could think of one we should dump, but I won't say.
You, is it, is it the same one you're calling on?
Yeah.
Every week?
Yes. I am not afraid to say yes.
We just can't dump it midstream.
I understand. I understand. I understand.
Are you Team Two or you?
Team Two?
Yeah, you're Team Two.
Did you all contribute or, doesn't look like?
Doesn't look like.
Who tied Kevin?
How about? Team, Team Three?
I will, I will jump in as, our, our core, our core is student success and jobs. If they don't apply to that, we need to reevaluate why we're working with them and why we're investing our talent and our treasure. We need to centrally track who we are working with, which that goes to a quarterly report of some sort. And, and we need to ask what we get out of it. I mean, as selfish as it sounds, if it doesn't go to student success and jobs, it's great to be really, really nice to people, but that's not what we get paid to do. That's not our job. We also need to establish expectations so that everybody knows, and this really goes more to the community partners, is if you want our treasure, you better be prepared to open your books to us limitedly. But if you want us to, to give you money, if you want something from us, be prepared to show us how you spent your treasure last year. And I think that we will exclude, we will not be in the positions we've been in in the past if there is some sort of absolutely document established, here's this, please tell us this, that before we partner with you, these are the documents we will need from you. We will need to know your leadership. We will need to know who has access. We will need, you know, very, very simple things that you and I would never go into business with someone if we didn't know, because that's what this is. We can call it partnerships all we want, but it's going into business with somebody. And then, and I think I'm jumping, but the only, well, I'll jump. But one of the things, and this goes to Midtown, is we want one voice. We want one person speaking for the board when it comes to Midtown. And frankly, I think we should really have one person speaking for the board or for the college. I don't mean the board. But, and then Bridget brought up a very good idea that somebody be media-trained. The media is its own animal. They're wonderful, wonderful creatures as long as they like you. But, but sometimes it's a slow news day. But they be media-trained. I thought that was an excellent point.
Very good. Thank you.
And then on Tarpon and Tarpon and Midtown, putting together like a seminal community education ecosystem. I don't know how I can. education ecosystem, I don't know how I can scream "yes" and "please" any louder.
Yeah.
I think that would be fantastic. Oh, and I also see that we had a, we have another collegiate high school up in North County that's proposed somewhere.
Okay. Very good. All right, let's move to the next category, and we will dive into Midtown.
I think she went through all of hers.
Yes, she did. That was great.
Aw, man.
She was on a roll. Team One, Midtown campus and facility planning?
Oh, I didn't do any of it.
On the Midtown facility and planning, we said stay focused on how to continue to develop and enhance the community. But though, while we're doing that, we have to remain focused on our core mission at Midtown, because we cannot be all things to everybody. We need to, it needs to result in quality. Yeah. At the end of the day, we are judged on how we, whether we have given a quality education. And we can have as many thing, planning, facilities, all these other things around Midtown, but at the end of the day, are we graduating students? Are we putting them through, are we making an impact in terms of education in the area? And not, and I think one of the things that Dale was saying, is not to get too far outside of the area that we're trying to serve, so that we're not trying to be too many things to do.
Okay.
And I think that's it.
That was it.
Great. And then, it looks like Team Two, To Capas? And then, if we want to scroll down, it's all right. Scroll down. Team Two, yep, this is where you are.
Okay. So do we go back to Team One, or Team?
Team One, go ahead, please. Mr. Gibbons, or?
You know, kind of like Laurie said, I think we've got to stay in those areas where those campuses are. We've got to understand the needs of that specific area, and remain focused on what our core mission is to kind of meet those needs. And not try to be everything to everybody, but understand that the needs in Tarpon may be 180 degrees different from the needs in Midtown. We've got to understand that and adapt to that. But it's what we need to do as kind of a support pillar in that community.
And I think, I think to add to that, I think what we were, by saying that, what we're saying is, we don't want to set Dr. Law or the college up for failure by trying to go too far outside of the scope. You know, we're going to be judged on what we're successful at, and what we're really good at, we need to stay focused on that and do it in those communities.
Excellent.
You know, it's nothing wrong with saying, you know, we're not a social service agency, but these folks are.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else related to community partnerships? Great discussions. Let's move back to organizational health, and were there some topics that got more attention than others that we can highlight? We'll scroll right up to the top and see. So website redesign, got some good energy. Any highlights that any of the teams would like to call out?
I think it's, you know, just with the, when someone, you know, whether they find it through a Google search or whatever, I think the website is kind of the front door, or, you know, whatever to the college, and it needs to be, you know, it needs to have kind of whatever look it needs that gets people in, and is easy to deal with, and very intuitive, and, you know, things like that. And I don't know how other companies like eBay, Amazon, and others get people to kind of get on there, but we need to figure that out, and kind of model some of our things maybe behind that.
Yeah, we were saying, you need to talk to those folks. I don't know why, not in this administration, we have not been afraid to talk to anybody, but we shouldn't be afraid to go out and find out. Those companies that have been successful, or groups that have been successful in making people come on in and utilize the front door, and get as much information, or buy, or whatever, talk to them about what they've done to make it inviting. You know, hey, this is, you know, so, that was one of the things that we thought was very important, because it is your front door. It's, you know, it's like an old house. You see an old house, it looks pretty spooky, you're not going to the front door.
Very good. Thank you for that. Anything else on website redesign?
I think we, what we talked about was just keeping it simple, keeping it uncluttered, making it easy, and linking it to our learning plans and our pathways, so that there is one place where, and I use the example of my Delta SkyMiles card, but I go into American Express, I log in, and poof, everything that's connected to American Express comes up. And it's simple, and it's easy, and someone who, I am not tech-savvy. If I can work it, somebody's done something right.
Okay. Very good.
I would just add, what Dale said, we should probably talk to people or model it after, because the website serves many purposes. You heard, it's the, you know, entrance admission, so, mission-driven, well, it's student-driven too. So you have two different, quite different entities.
And it's a recruiting tool.
Going to one site, so, and people get bored if they have to click more than three times or so, they're gone.
Yeah.
So it's not just one purpose type thing, and both situations have to be served.
Okay. Thank you. How about the CRM? Did we have some good discussion we want to highlight?
Yeah, I can, just because I have one, and I seem to be the only one at the table that has one.
Well, Dale has one too.
So we talked about garbage in, garbage out, that you need to limit the people who are able to actually put information in it, because if they put bad information in it, bad information comes out of it. And that happens a lot, if you don't limit. We also talked about that the foundation, and the college, and the workforce part all should share the same context, whether or not the information was able to be seen, because some of it's confidential in the foundation's case, but that you should know, that person is our customer regardless. So you should know what their interaction is with the college all the way across. And there was something else that was really important that I don't remember. Diana, what else?
Same voice, same page, so that whatever language we use, that the entire college is speaking, using the same language within the CRM.
Oh, and to pick the one that's easy. Otherwise, people won't use it. That's what didn't make it up there. The harder they are, the less people will be inclined to actually use it.
Yes.
I agree with everything she said. It's, you know, the system, somebody really needs to know how to use it. There's a bunch of them out there, some of them are easier than others. I think we chose the one that was probably the hardest one to deal with. But again, it's, you know, you've got to understand the data that you're collecting, but really what you want to get out of it. And it's got to be consistently managed, and, you know, that data sometimes can be, it's kind of like, the more you chew, the bigger it gets, kind of thing. And you really have to manage what you want to get out of this, because it can become a vast sea of useless data, if you don't manage it, and you don't understand what you want to get out of this thing. I mean, and I've seen both ways with this thing, and, you know, we kind of let ours kind of get away from us, and then we had to kind of bring it back. And you've got to, the other thing too, is dedicating the resources to make sure that it is fed properly and cared for properly, so that you can get out what you want to, and it's valuable. So.
What system did you use?
ACT.
Oh, God.
Shoot me in the head.
They've got that kind of rapid...
We got to the back.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
But we've kind of conquered it, I think, finally, but it just, it wasn't an easy battle.
All right.
There are easier ones out there.
Thank you. How about employee development? Did we have some key input here we want to highlight?
We all, we didn't have a whole lot, other than we were thrilled that these programs were started, from where, how the board wanted to interact, I think what we had thought was is informal, informal contact, and a lot, you know, if they're going to be doing a day, like we gave the example of leadership panelists, if they're going to be doing a day, we'll come in and have lunch. But we don't need any formal, I certainly wouldn't want to give a formal presentation. I don't know that that's where you get your best information.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else related to employee development?
Just a comment on the, so the things on here, the leadership development program, and the evaluations, which we talked about, I think, a little bit at the last board meeting. I think both very valuable things going forward. You know, anytime, you know, this whole employee development's really an investment in the faculty and staff at the college, and I think it's very important that we do those kind of things. But along with that is kind of the feedback and the honesty that goes along with kind of the discussions that you have and things like that, and we just need to make sure that that all works. And, you know, if someone's doing well, they need to know they're doing well. If someone needs development, or there's some opportunities, they need to know that also. And I'm not sure how well the academic environment is set up for that, but it just, it really needs to be made core part of that business. And I think we can get a lot of value out of it, as long as we do it right.
I want to take a second. Rich Mergadante has been consistent in working with us to say, the quality of the discussion between the program chairs and the deans and the faculty, we have to raise the level of that dialogue. It has to be much along the lines you're talking about. What's working, let's get that on the record. What's not working, let's find out, how to get that on the record without everybody's feelings getting hurt, without everybody, where we can just tee up the issues. And Rich has been fundamental on that. For the non-academic side of the house, I think our challenge is the middle manager, same thing. How, do those folks have the skill to interact in a way that is both direct, but formative? That is, here's what's off-track, we've got to get it on-track. Can we do that without everybody getting angry, and personal, or something else?
Believe it or not, Dr. Law, I think this is probably going to be your biggest challenge. Because it is changing the corporate culture of the organization to be able to take construction, constructive criticism and feedback. And in our discussion, we also talked about doing more of a three, type of 360 evaluation for faculty, as well as advisors, because an advisor really tells you to take this course, but they have on a sheet, and they say, oh, you have to take this because you're trying to get this particular degree, right? Or get to this particular point. But they really never know what the course is entailed, they don't know how that instructor teaches, they don't, you know, so they're just advising the young people based upon, or persons based upon what's in a book. So I think, and it's, and like Dale said, I don't know how set up the academic world is ready, and our, and our organization is ready to really take really constructive criticism and feedback. Because, for example, when we talked about those instructors earlier, they're right. In corporate America, that's the lower half, and you get rid of them, and you bring new people in that you think could be more successful. Well, they, that, those particular instructors have to be ready for feedback to help them become better instructors, so that they market, or help us market this college to other folks to come through and make sure that they're, you know, they, hey, this course is okay, this instructor's made a lot of changes. Sometimes I find that in the academic areas, a lot of times it is more rigid, because they're, I teach this, I'm the guy, I know this, and I know you see that. But when Dale was talking about adjuncts, that related to me, because they bring real-world experiences, and real-life experiences sometimes, that they can give to young folks, or to their students, and it helps. So I think this is going to be your biggest thing, because I think that the environment is just rigid, and folks think they know more than you and everybody else in their particular area of the world when it comes to academia.
I think you're right.
I think we're, just like every other institution.
Oh, no, I don't disagree with that, I just think it's going to be his biggest challenge.
Teachers don't like, teachers, instructors...
Don't like to be criticized. Yeah, exactly.
Close the door, they're the king of their, the king of their classrooms, their god, their guys in their classrooms. They don't want to be evaluated.
Oh.
All right.
I would have a little more to say about this if I had known.
All right. Excellent. Do we have any final advisement on the financial projections? Words of wisdom?
The only thing that I had said was, is that this is fantastic, and there are things on here that even though they are completely common sense, I would have missed. So this was, I thought this was great. I don't know that I need every program we have going broken into this detail, my eyes will turn bloody. But with that said, I do think that if it's new, if it's, if something is proposed going forward, that breaking it into these probably is helpful. If we have a program that is struggling, applying this to it is probably not a bad idea. That may not, it may not be the reason why it's struggling, but it also may shed some light on something, so.
We want to be sure you, that we start at the square one, and said, these are the factors that go into the analysis, and here's how the factors play with each other. And then we can show you our program reviews and how we analyze those factors. But it's not simplistic, that's the only point. There, when you squeeze it here, it comes out somewhere else, okay? And I think, we haven't shared that. Then you have to move it to the quality discussion. So what is the next question? That's your discussion, is right, so what?
Excellent. So all of your great input will be captured in a real-time record, available to you tomorrow, your full work product, and then, would you like to? I was going to ask if Jonathan could speak 10 seconds, give a quick 10-second soundbite. Your input is illustrated in living color over here, so.
Thank you. Well, it takes me 10 seconds to say my name here, but that's why I draw, so I don't have to speak, right? What can I say? Where should I start? Just starting at the left, I mean, there was a lot of energy this morning, and the tone of the conversation made me think about firemen, and fires, and putting out fires. It just seemed like St. Pete College has this representation, or reputation of being there. You know, being there for students, responding to their needs, whatever issues they have, responding to business needs, responding to community needs. So we just started with a fire truck, you know, just saying, you know, we're that first responder, responding to students, business, and community. You know, just talking about the idea of early alert, just being there for that student, so we don't lose that student, getting them back on track, getting them basically off the ditch. You know, and putting initiatives in, like the mandatory orientation, to sort of just rise them up to the level that they need to be. And the success of my learning plan, you've got to have a plan, you know? If you don't have a plan, you don't have direction. So just making sure that the students have that learning plan, they're focused, they can see the future, they're pointed in the right direction. There were some things we brought over in the earlier conversation with the stars attached to them, the importance of the libraries and learning centers, the collegiate high school, the exploratory labs, just, you know, building on those things, and, you know, those successful initiatives there. The importance of that software, I forget the name of it, but, you know, it can cook and clean, and, you know, it's magical software, I just sort of wrote "magical software" on it, you know? But, you know, that seems to add a lot of value. Then we talked about enrollment growth, and how important student retention was to that, just keeping the student that we have, you know, sort of being that first step in enrollment growth. Then we just moved on to, I guess, this idea of triage, you know? Not everybody's going to go to school for four years, you know? Sometimes you need a two-year degree, you need a certificate, but just sort of being there to help, help that student focus on what they need, responsive to the community needs, you know, meeting our core goals, the idea of partnerships, you know, sometimes you have to say no, that's, you know, no means no. But because you're a fireman, you're rushing in, you know, it's important not to rush into every building, or to rush into every partnership, so. And then down below, we've got the bullets around organizational health, so.
Thank you, Jonathan. So this will be in the real-time record as well. What an honor this has been, what a great day. Dr. Law, any closing remarks, or anybody? Thank you.
On behalf of the board, I want to tell everyone, thank you very much for all the preparedness for this morning, and the insightful comments and everything. Andrea, and Jonathan, and your staff, thank you very much for... And I think the board would agree, we had a great 2014, and we look forward to 2015. And last, happy holidays, a couple more weeks. So, thank you very much.